Good evening, and this second meeting of the seventy-third term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. Tonight's invocation will be led by Charlene Kelly of Vethel Amy. Ms. Kelly, you have the floor. Please bow our heads and listen to the prayer. I'm so sorry, Ms. Kelly, you are on mute. You can't hear the prayer. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we want to start by thanking you for being a loving gracious God who covers us in the good times and even during these difficult times. Now, Lord, I thank you for the leaders of Baltimore City. I pray that you will lead them, guide them, and protect them as they make decisions that will propel this city into greatness. Amen.
Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. In lieu of showcase of Baltimore tonight, I'll reiterate what I talked about at our luncheon today. As council members, if you have organizations, entities that you would like to highlight, you know, we're coming up with a list not only for the invocation, but also for our showcase going forward. You know, typically, we have organization or government entity, or just a great service provider, you know, throughout the city, just to highlight to the entire city of what's really going on in the city. So, please think of some cool ideas, and please provide that information. You can send it to either Brittany or Matt. The court will call the roll for members.
President Mosby, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Costello, Stokes, Glover, Councilwoman Rose.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
See to the adoption of the journal?
Mr. President, the Journal of the December tenth, twenty twenty proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Here are none, the journal is adopted. Messages from the mayor can be found in the meeting agenda. We now turn to executive appointments.
EA twenty-one dash zero 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 one, Teresa Bruce, Member Trauma Informed Care Task Force, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero two, David Ofunkel, Member Trauma Informed Care Task Force, District three.
This has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty-one dash zero 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 three, Philip J. Lees, Member Trauma Informed Care Task Force, District six.
This has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty-one dash zero 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 four, Jabari Lyles, Member Trauma Informed Care Task Force, District ten.
This has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty-one dash zero 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 five, Daniel D. Carson, Member Trauma Informed Care Task Force, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move to bills being introduced.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 one, Surveillance Technology in Baltimore for the Purpose of Prohibiting Baltimore City Government from Purchasing or Obtaining Certain Safe Surveillance Technologies. Prohibiting Baltimore City Government from Contracting or Subcontracting with another for the Purpose of Safe Surveillance Technologies. Prohibiting any person in Baltimore City from obtaining, retaining, assessing, or using certain safe tech surveillance technologies, or any information obtained from this, from certain safe surveillance technologies. Requiring the Director of Baltimore City Information and Technology to submit an annual report to the Mayor and City Council regarding the use of surveillance by the Mayor and City Council, providing for certain termination dates, providing for certain penalties, and defining certain terms. Sponsored Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, and Bullock.
Without any dialogue or discourse, this bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 two, Real Property Tax Installment Plan. For the Purpose of Authorizing that the real property taxes owed on certain properties may be paid through a monthly installment plan established in the monthly maximum term for an installment payment plan, authorizing that certain payments may be subject to a service charge, authorizing that certain late payments shall be referred to the tax sale ombudsman. Requiring the Director of Finance to adopt regulations to implement this subtitle, defining certain terms, providing for special effective dates, and generally relating to installment payments of real property taxes in Baltimore City. Sponsors Ramos, Dorsey, Burnett, Middleton, Stokes, McCray, Bullock, Schleifer, Cohen, and President Mosby.
This bill has been assigned to the Waging Means Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 three, Baltimore City Work Group on Nuisance Parking and Auto Businesses. For the Purpose of Establishing the Baltimore City Work Group on Nuisance Parking and Auto Businesses, Providing for the Composition, Share, and Staffing of the Work Group, Requiring the Work Group to Study Certain Matters Related to the Illegal Storage of Motor Vehicles and Public Right-Aways by Motor Vehicle Repair Establishments and Motor Vehicle Dealerships, and Make Certain Recommendations. Requiring the Work Group to Report Its Findings and Recommendations to the Mayor and City Council on or before a Certain Date, Providing for a Special Effective Date, Providing for the Termination of this Ordinance, and Generally Relating to the Illegal Practice of Using the Public Right-of-Way and Surplus Private Motor Vehicle Storage. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Glover, Middleton, Bullock, Schleifer.
Councilwoman Dorsey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for co-sponsoring this bill this evening, and just say I'm really looking forward to hearing on this bill and addressing this problem. I know that there are constituents around the city who regard junk cars parked on their neighborhood streets and on their community roads as a nuisance, an eyesore, and that there is a significant level of frustration that can, that residents throughout the city, as well as business owners who have this impacting their business communities, face and the frustration over the city's kind of persistent kind of inability to respond to this effectively. It's my hope that by convening this work group, that we can bring minds together to try to understand where the barriers to progress are, and how we strategize and make tactical changes, and how we approach this problem to, to, to be, begin to address it. I, I wanted to thank everybody as a co, who signed on as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, yes, Councilman.
I apologize. I think that Councilwoman Porter had her hand up. She had asked earlier to be signed on as a co-sponsor.
I'm so sorry, Councilwoman Porter. You would like to be listed as a co-sponsor?
Yes, sir. I just want to offer that as a point of clarification. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Dorsey.
Are there any other council members that would like to sign on? Is that Torrance? I see Torrance, Ramos, Sir Torrance? Yes, Councilman Torrance?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
Okay, so, so far, I see the Councilwoman Porter, Torrance, and Ramos to be added as co-sponsors.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, guys. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Next bill?
One dash zero 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 four, Office to End Homelessness, Establishment, Administration, and Permanent Housing Voucher Program. For the Purpose of Establishing the Baltimore City Office to End Homelessness, declaring that the policy of the Mayor and City Councils of Baltimore to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. Providing that the office will be led by an Executive Director appointed by the Mayor and confirmed by the City Council, establishing the duties of the office, certain reports, establishing the permanent housing voucher program, providing for certain funding for the permanent housing voucher program, setting forth the eligibility requirements for the permanent housing voucher program, requiring that the office adopt rules, regulations to administer the permanent housing voucher program, establishing procedures on a family's admission into the permanent housing voucher program, setting forth certain programmatic functions for the permanent housing voucher program through dependent-based vouchers and project-based vouchers, providing for the termination of assistance under the permanent housing voucher program for certain enumerated reasons, providing for hearings for certain terminations and denials of assistance, establishing certain hearing procedures and conduct of the hearings, appealing City Code Article One of Title twenty-four, Overnight Shelters as Implicative, defining certain terms, generally relating to ending homelessness in Baltimore, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Ramos, McCray, Porter, and Bullock.
The, I'd like to recognize the bill sponsor, Councilwoman Dorsey.
And, as is read in the short titles of this bill, this bill is about one thing above all else, making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. And that can really only happen if we develop more housing opportunity for people and approach it in the smartest way possible, and are truly dedicated to it. And that's what this bill is about. Right now, we have a Mayor's Office of Homeless Services that has been kind of shuffled around many, housed in many other offices over the years, including also being made independent in a way. But it has not shared continuity over the years in its mission, its approach, or its leadership. And what this bill does is to help create continuity by establishing permanently in our city code that this office should exist, and giving it guidance on how it needs to operate and approach its mission. I'm really appreciative to Mayor Scott for being a partner on this last term in, as I brought it up then, this is a reintroduction of that bill, which was unanimously passed by the previous council. And, and that this is, this is a collaborative effort, not to say that the Mayor's Office doesn't already have a strong commitment to addressing homelessness, but that by creating a, an office that is a standalone entity where the director is not just appointed by the, the mayor, but is confirmed by the City Council upon nomination by the mayor, we create a more collaborative and collective relationship in addressing homelessness, and one that sets us up on a good footing for not just this administration, but all future administrations. The bill goes on to establish a housing voucher program that will help to augment our ability to provide housing for homeless people in Baltimore, Baltimore City, not just individuals, but families, helping to move people from permanent supportive housing into continued housing assistance and make way in permanent supportive housing programs for those who are still living on the street. Part of what's referred to as a move-on strategy that has been on the books by the Continuum of Care here in Baltimore City, as well as the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, as an established goal and priority in its strategic plan for years. And here we are with this bill, working to help this to come to fruition. So, thanking Mr. President and to all my co-sponsors, I look forward to hearing on this bill.
Councilwoman Dorsey, does anyone else would like to want to join in this bill or speak about the bill? I see Councilman Torrance. Would you like to be added on as a co-sponsor? Anyone else? I see Councilman Glover.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. So, added on the bill, we'll note that it's Councilman Torrance, as well as Councilman Glover. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
One dash zero 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 five, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R-seven zoning district, variances eight-ten Argon Drive. For the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R-seven zoning district on a property known as eight-ten Argon Drive, block three-nine-one-three-C, Lot zero-two-one, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, providing for certain, for special effective date and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking requirement. Sponsor Conway. City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 six, Rezoning four-oh-seven Bennington Goss Road. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the property known as four-oh-seven Bennington Road, block five-zero-one-four-C, Lot zero-zero-four-A, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, from the R-three zoning district to the O-R dash one zoning district. Sponsor Conway.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 seven, COVID-nineteen Restaurant, Consumer, and Gig Worker Release Act, Temporary Limit on Third-Party Delivery Services Fees. For the Purpose of Establishing Certain Temporary Regulations on Third-Party Food Delivery Platforms, defining certain terms, authorizing the Director of Finance to adopt rules and regulations to implement and enforce this subtitle, setting forth certain prohibited conducts for third-party food delivery platforms, providing for enforcement by citation, providing for certain criminal and administrative penalties, providing for this ordinance's servability, setting forth a certain termination date, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the regulation of third-party food delivery platforms and the economic well-being of Baltimore residents, consumers, and gig workers during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Sponsors Costello, President Mosby, Stokes, Dorsey, Ramos, Burnett, McCray, Middleton, Bullock.
I would like to recognize the gentleman from the eleventh district, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill addresses an immediate issue, specifically support for our restaurants during this challenging time during the pandemic, when there are increased restrictions on their operations, and they're being charged upwards of thirty percent per delivery. This bill institutes an aggregate cap of fifteen percent on the total cost that can be charged at the restaurant. It protects consumers from having these costs passed on to them, and it ensures our protection, it ensures protection for our gig workers. Specifically, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership on this issue, and helping us to figure out a way to ensure that our gig workers, many of which are Baltimore City restaurants, are protected. The bill will sunset ninety days after a state of emergency is rescinded by the COVID. We've worked on expedited schedule for both deliberation, or for deliberation leading up to enactment on January twenty-fifth. I want to thank Mayor Scott for his support in agreeing to sign this bill as soon as it gets to his desk, and want to thank each of our co-sponsors on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As discussed prior, this bill is a creative solution to providing immediate relief to our small businesses that have been impacted greatly, like we all have, as it relates to fallout from COVID. So, again, Mr. Chair, thank you for creativity and bringing this timely bill. At this point, are there any additional comments, concerns, or co-sponsors?
Councilwoman Felicia Porter, for a clarification, I wanted to kind of, to this bill as well.
Okay. So, we have Councilwoman Porter, I believe Councilman Cohen, I think I saw Councilman Torrance, I saw Councilman Glover. Are there anyone else that would like to sign on at this point? Okay, so, we have Cohen, Porter, Torrance, and Glover. Please add them to the record as co-sponsors of this bill. We would like to jump back to twenty-one dash zero 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 five. That bill was assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Want to make sure that we, that the record reflects that accurately.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 eight, City Property, Naming the Playground in Northwest Park, located at two-zero-two-seven West Rogers Avenue to be Ricky Spector Playground. For the Purpose of Naming the Playground in Northwest Park, located at two-zero-two-seven West Rogers Avenue and approximately a hundred feet from the street to be Ricky Spector Playground. Sponsors Schleifer, Middleton.
I'd like to recognize the gentleman from District Five, Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is at the request of the community and to honor my predecessor, Councilwoman Ricky Spector, who served the fifth district in the city of Baltimore for close to forty years. The councilman was instrumental in getting the funds necessary for this specific playground, and so we are honoring her in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 nine, Zoning Residential Conversion. For the Purpose of Changing the Procedure for the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a multi-family dwelling in the R-seven and R-eight zoning district, and adding a unit type to the type of unit that may be established in a converted dwelling. Sponsors Bullock, Dorsey, and Burnett.
The gentleman from the ninth district, you have the floor?
President, just want to say this bill represents good public policy as it relates to affordable housing and life elimination. We all know that our city has a large number of vacant houses, and they need investment and maintenance, and oftentimes, these properties are very large and are impractical for single-family use, and would be more suited for two or more dwellings. Back in Transform Baltimore, which took effect back in twenty-seventeen, the zoning code was to establish objective standards, if they met that conversion, they could be approved as a matter of right. And that's what we're looking for at this point. Currently, this is an inefficient use of time for council members, legislative reference, as well as the planning commission. As drafted, this was also approved by the planning commission in Transform Baltimore to oppose lot size requirement, building size, and gross unit size, and parking. And so, part of the reasoning for this is that it would be the fair and equitable approach on these conversions. And quite often, these winds up being subjective decisions as opposed to looking at the facts on the ground. Quite frankly, also, this ordinance process is very difficult for small renovators, developers, because it adds time, cost, and it also has a negative impact on providing affordable housing. And as you know, affordable housing is very critical in our city. And if you're trying to renovate a, a unit, it can be very difficult to have return on investment if you're then trying to have that kind of process undergone. So, again, supporting affordable housing is very key to this. Again, we want to immer, amend the zoning code to back, to allow for these conversions. And I also want to note, again, that this does not eliminate public input through the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, and so I really appreciate your consideration on this matter in terms of good public policy and making sure that we're in line with other jurisdictions, not only around the state, but also around the country, who do this through the same pattern. Thank you very much.
Hearing, you've seen the audience raise, this bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one zero, Rezoning two-zero-eight-seven Dreward Park Drive. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the property known as two-zero-eight-seven Dreward Park Drive, block three-three-nine-zero-B, Lot zero-three-six, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, from L-dash-one zoning district to the L-M-U-dash-one zoning district. Sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one one, Rezoning two-four-two-six Pennsylvania Avenue. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the property known as two-four-two-six Pennsylvania Avenue, block zero-two-nine-four, Lot zero-one-four, as outlined and read in the accompanying flat, from the zero, excuse me, O-R-dash-one-R-dash-M-U zoning district to the C-dash-one-dash-E zoning district. Sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one two, Rezoning one-two-one-four-dash-one-two-two-zero Hall Street. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the property known as one-two-one-four-dash-one-two-two-zero Hall Street, block one-nine-eight-eight-B, Lot zero-one-nine, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, from the R-dash-eight zoning district to the O-dash-R-dash-one zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one three, Rezoning four-zero-one-five Foster Avenue, four-zero-zero-zero Hudson Street, and eight-zero-one South Haven Street. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the properties known as four-zero-one-five Foster Avenue, block zero-six-four-four-seven, Lot zero-two-one, and four-zero-zero-zero Hudson Street, block six-four-five-seven, Lot zero-one-eight, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, from the L-dash-one zoning district to the L-M-U-dash-two zoning district, and changing the zoning of the property known as eight-zero-one South Haven Street, block six-four-five-eight, Lot zero-zero-three, from the L-dash-two zoning district to the L-M-U-dash-two zoning district, as outlined in blue on the accompanying flat. Sponsor Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one four, Baltimore City Fire Department Reporting Requirements. For the Purpose of Requiring the Fire Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department to report annually certain information to the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, requiring the reports to be made available on the department's website, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, McCray, Middleton, and Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one five.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair. Council Rule five-dash-two allows council members to speak on any issue, and I would like to have the opportunity to speak about the legislation and how to introduce it either.
Oh, definitely. Sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem.
So, the, the intent of this bill is to address some of the issues in the hiring and promotional practices within the Baltimore City Fire Department. The intent is to basically pull back the veil. There have been issues.
I'm sorry, Councilman, could, could you repeat that? I think we missed your audio.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, the, the intention of this bill is to address the, some issues that have been raised in the Fire Department around their hiring practice, practices, and promotion, and promotion practices within the department, which, based on a twenty-nineteen study done by the Labor Committee, pointed out several issues around race and gender, as well as issues with the department's high school program, recruitment program, and just overall pushing for more accountability and transparency in how people become firefighters, as well as, once they're in the department, ensuring that there is equity and opportunity for them to rise through the ranks. And so, this would require the department to publicly disclose who's getting promotions, their race and gender, putting that in a very public way, as a way that we can ensure that the Baltimore City Fire Department is reflective of Baltimore City residents and the city that they, they work so hard and tirelessly in every single day, as well as ensuring that there are opportunities for women and people of color to rise through the ranks in the Baltimore City Fire Department. So, looking forward to discussing it further in committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any additional co-sponsors for this bill? We have Torrance, I see Glover. And so, right now, we will let the record reflect that Torrance and Glover would like to, Councilman Torrance and Councilman Glover would like to be added on as co-sponsors. Real quick, this bill has been assigned to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. So, Public Safety and Government Operations.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one five, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lots, one-one-five and one-one-eight Montclair Street. For the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the Establishment, Maintenance, and Operation of Parking Lots on the Properties Known as one-one-five Montclair Street, Block zero-two-five-one, Lot zero-six-eight, and one-one-eight Montclair Street, Block zero-two-five-one, and Lot zero-seven-two, as outlined and read on the accompanying flat, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one six, Leans and Late Charges Installment Plan. For the Purpose of Authorizing that certain arrears and leans plans for the purpose of authorizing that certain arrears and liens may be paid through installment payment plan and agreement, establishing the effect of reaching an installment plan agreement specifying the contents of the notice of an offer of an installment payment plan, specifying certain terms of the installment payment plan agreement, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to installment payments of certain arrears and liens in Baltimore City. Sponsors Ramos, Dorsey, Burnett, Middleton, Stokes, McCray, Cohen, and President Mosby.
Mr. President?
Yes, I would like to give the floor to the gentlewoman from the Fourteenth District, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the cosponsors who wanted to speak to this bill. This is designed to help people pay their taxes, and if they're in arrears or behind on their taxes, that they work out a payment plan with Department of Finance and Officer de Ombro. It is a companion bill to my first one that we saw earlier. The first one would make sure that people who don't have a mortgage could pay their taxes. So, thanks for including this in the market package of housing bills for housing needs, and thank you to the cosponsors, the Department of Finance, and I very much look forward to all of your support and passion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any additional cosponsors for this bill at this time? I have Torrance. So, please let the record reflect that Councilman Torrance would like to be added to this bill. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero One Seven, study and report city employee parking benefits for the purpose of requiring that the Department of Housing, excuse me, Department of Human Resources, and the Department of Finance submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating certain matters related to providing parking and commuter benefits to city employees, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, and Cohen.
I would like to recognize Councilman Dorsey.
The city of Baltimore spends three-quarters of a million dollars every year to pay for free parking for roughly one, roughly five percent of its employees. Generally speaking, those employees are in some of the most empowered and high-paying positions in city government. We offer those same people no alternative transportation benefit that they could opt for, for any more sustainable transportation mode, other than their driving of their single-occupant vehicle into downtown, where we espouse to be concerned with congestion, right? At the same time that we are concerned with downtown congestion and environmental emissions, we are literally paying for people to be that congestion, and literally paying for people to create those emissions, and we offer them no alternative that is available at the same cost. This bill just looks for a couple of agencies to look into the feasibility of creating those alternative, potential alternatives, as well as looking into the matter of whether there should actually be a policy determining who is even eligible for these benefits. Just to give you one other sense of, I think, the inequity that exists in the current way that the city does this. If you are a city council staffer, and you are the lowest-paid employee in the office, you could still get, you could have a parking space provided to you that costs your office a hundred dollars a month in order to provide that parking space to you. But if you don't make enough to actually be able to afford a car, maybe you're somebody who is having to choose between paying the rent, or paying a car note, or paying car insurance each month, you get no alternative. You can get that parking benefit if you have the car, but if you don't own a car, you get no comparable benefit in place of that parking benefit. And I think that that's an important equity point for us to consider, and that's one of the things that this, that this bill just simply asks HR and the Finance Department to look into, in terms of what the public policy implications are of this practice of handing out free parking to people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Do I see any hands, folks that are interested in being added on as cosponsors? I see none. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero One Eight, study and report towing dispatch systems for the purpose of requiring that Baltimore City Information and Technology, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating methods and systems of dispatching towing vehicles within Baltimore City, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, and Bullock.
I would like to recognize the gentleman from the Third District, Councilman Dorsey.
Thanks again, Mr. President. This is the last bill I'll speak on this evening. The city has been dispatching towers in the same way forever. And why do we do it that way today? Because we've been doing it that way forever. There are only a handful of towers in the city of Baltimore who are a large enough company to be able to meet the demands that the city of Baltimore makes on them if they are to be a contractor to the city. And one of the things that sets up those demands is the way that we dispatch to them. We say that if you are, if you're a contractor to the city, we put a radius of a couple miles around the office of your business, and if anything, if there's a crash that the police department responds to, and they need to have somebody tow the car from that scene, from that location, they know who to call based on whose radius it's in. What this bill asks is that we study whether, in twenty twenty-one, there might just possibly be some better way to do this than the way we were doing it literally fifty years ago. That in the age of Uber, maybe it's possible that there's a better technological solution, and it's just my belief that if we do this, and we start to be able to dispatch on a smaller scale, this will create job opportunity for smaller businesses, it'll create more opportunity for more businesses to enter this market of contracting for the city, that this will open up the market to black-owned businesses who currently are only helping white-owned businesses to meet their MWBE requirements, and instead, making them more capable of serving as primary contractors instead of subcontractors to the city, and earning more each tow, and having a greater number that they're able to do in the first place. Again, this is just a study bill. I think it's really important for us to normalize the idea of us collectively as a council asking that challenging subjects be studied when they become important to us, not when they become, you know, not when an agency finally works its way down to being able to care about something, but when we, the legislative and policy leaders of the city, see that there's a problem, we ought to be able to demand that certain studies take place, and that's what this bill is for. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this point, are there any requests for cosponsors? I see Councilman Glover and Councilman Torrance. Seeing and hearing none, please let the record reflect that Councilman Glover and Councilman Torrance as cosponsors. This bill will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations.
One Dash Zero Zero One Nine, Baltimore City Office of LGBTQ Affairs. For the purpose of establishing a Baltimore City Office of LGBTQ Affairs, specifying certain terms, providing for the appointment of the director of the office, establishing the duties of the office, providing for the staff and budget of the office, establishing an LGBTQ commission to advise and collaborate with the office, proving to the appointment, structure, and governance of the commission, requiring the director, commission members, and staff of the office to buy financial disclosures under the ethics code, and requiring that the office submit an annual report to the mayor and city council. Sponsors Burnett, Cohen, and Dorsey.
Councilman Burnett, would you like to speak on this bill? I'm sorry. Just real quick, I'm sorry. You're still on your screen freezing, so it's hard to tell. You're frozen now, but I got you. You're frozen again. Councilman Burnett? While Councilman Burnett tries to come on, are there any cosponsors that would like to be added to this bill? I see Councilman Stokes as a cosponsor. Anyone else that would like to cosponsor? I got Glover, as well as Ramos. So, I have to allow the record to reflect that Councilman Stokes, Councilman Glover, and Councilwoman Ramos would like to be added on as cosponsors. Councilman Burnett, are you able to speak up now? I think you turned the video on to see if the bandwidth is... Councilman Burnett? If you can hear us, Councilman Burnett, towards the end, if you would like the opportunity to speak on this bill, I'll give you an opportunity to speak.
I think I'm back. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. You're back. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that, y'all.
No problem.
So, the intention of this bill is to establish the Office of LGBTQ Affairs, and to codify the already-existing LGBTQ commission into law, which was established a few years ago. The purpose is to ensure that our government is as representative as possible, and the LGBTQ community has been marginalized for a very long time in the city and across the country. And so, much like we established a women's commission, a youth commission, Office of Indigenous Affairs, it's important that we have representation in government for such a vital community, and diverse community here in the city of Baltimore. I'm thankful to have the buy-in of the administration and the cosponsors, and thank you, Mr. President, for this one.
No, thank you for putting forth such important legislation. This bill will be assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Two Zero, Baltimore City Commission for Women Ex officio Members for the purpose of designated any female member of the Baltimore City Council as an ex officio non-voting member of the Baltimore City Commission for Women, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Middleton, Burnett, McCray, and Cohen.
I would like to call on the council's vice president, Councilwoman Sharon Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, the Women's Commission was basically defunct for quite a while, and last term, it was basically reinstated. It's been growing strong now for about, for over two years. The Women's Commission itself is nineteen, twenty members or so. But because of the need and basically importance of the committee, there were, it started with nine committees underneath that particular commission, and now they consumed it into six strong committees, but still, the seventy-five to a hundred women are still very much involved. In fact, they still have individual Zoom meetings and, you know, meet together. So, they were meeting out in different places, the actual small committees themselves. Also, during that process, there was a resolution put in to make the female council members ex officio members, and because that was a resolution, the two, the two members that were ex officio members are now gone. And, you know, I'm still an ex officio member, and I think it's important that the females on the council continue to be somewhat members of that committee. We are a minority on the council, and, you know, we, it's important that we continue to spread the needs of women throughout the city and through many of the concerns. So, you know, the partnership is very important. So, that's what we've signed on, and looking forward to the hearing as we move forward with the needs of women, children, and families in this city.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. As discussed earlier, you know, again, just like all the other bills, this is another timely bill. We understand the importance of diversity on this council. Two out of our four, fifty percent of the female members on this council are chairs. It's the reason that we set it up that way. But I think this is another point of ensuring that women's issues are upheld in the right regard. We know that women are physical forces impacted through this current circumstance of COVID-19, particularly in our city and single mothers, and I think this speaks directly to that. At this point, I'll entertain any additional cosponsors. I see Councilman Glover, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett, and Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Costello. So, I have Councilman Glover, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Torrance as cosponsors to be added onto this bill. This bill will be assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Two One, late fees for past-due rent. For the purpose of requiring a lease to have a provision regarding a ten-day grace period, requiring a lease to have provisions regarding the amount of money landlords can charge for late fees, when landlords may charge tenants receiving public assistance for late fees, late fees as a condition precedent to the tenant's right to redeem, and the types of fees landlords may recover, and prohibiting this section from altering other remedies available to a landlord. Sponsors Middleton, Stokes, Ramos, Cohen, and President Mosby.
Thank you. Good evening. The resumption of the second meeting of the seventy-third term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will reorganize you by, I will recognize you, sorry, by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. For those of you on WebEx or watching us on Channel TV, the council's regular meeting was on Monday, January eleventh, but unfortunately, cut short due to a nationwide outage of WebEx. We're going to pick up this evening where we left off on Monday and introduce the meetings. First, to the clerk, I'll call, please call the room.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schiper, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Twenty One, late fees for past-due rent. For the purpose of requiring a lease to have a provision regarding the ten-day grace period, requiring a lease to have provisions regarding the amount of money landlords may charge for late fees, when landlords may charge tenants receiving public assistance for late fees, late fees as a condition precedent to the tenant's right to redeem, and the types of fees landlords may recover, and prohibiting this section from altering other remedies available to a landlord. Sponsors are Councilman Stokes, Middleton, Ramos, and President Mosby.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, you may have your computer hooked up to another mic. We're still hearing feedback somewhere else, but we're not hearing you. We're still hearing feedback somewhere else, but we're not hearing you.
Right.
Mr. President is going to drop and then get back.
Can you guys hear me now? We're good? All right, there we go.
Yes.
We're getting, we're getting all the hiccups. Hopefully, this will get all of, out of all the systems and network issues. Also, at this point, the clerk read 21-0021, Late Fees for Past Due Rent. At this point, I would like to recognize the bill sponsor, Chairman Stokes.
Now, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make some comments. The pandemic has taken a toll on mental, physical, and financial health of many Baltimoreans since March of last year. Although we now have a vaccine, the city still has economic hurdles to overcome. Residents who receive public assistance are especially at risk. This is why we're putting things in place to prevent evictions during these times. Late fees for past due rent ensures people who receive public assistance actually receive their benefits before they require to pay the rent. This bill provides for a ten-day grace period for rental late fees. And this bill is not intended to stop you from paying your rent. I'm going to say that again. This bill does not, this bill is not intended to stop you from paying your rent. You still have to pay your rent. But it will provide relief for vulnerable residents during this crisis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any interested in speaking up on the bill or interested in cosponsoring? Any additional cosponsors? Okay, this bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. The next bill up is a city council bill. Is the clerk back on? All right. The next.
Co-sponsors, Mr. President.
Again, Mr. Glover. You would like to be added as a cosponsor?
Yes, myself and Councilman Torrance.
I'm sorry, I missed your hand, Councilman Torrance.
Yes, you did, Mr. President, but thank you. Thank you, Councilman Glover.
All right, perfect. If we could have the record to reflect that we add on cosponsors, Councilman Glover as well as Councilman Torrance. Is the clerk up and running again?
City Council Bill 21-22, Security Deposit Alternative. For the purpose of requiring certain lease provisions to create alternatives besides the traditional security deposit for residential leases under certain circumstances, defining certain terms and prohibiting this subsection from limiting a landlord's ability to require certain qualifications on a residential tenant's application for a new residential lease. Sponsors are Middleton, Stokes, Ramos, and President Mosby.
At this time, I will call on the bill sponsor, Vice President Sharon Green-Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as everyone knows, this is, we're picking up from, I think, Monday, we did an extensive talk and dialogue and press conference and so on on a housing, on how, a package of housing bills. And this is one added that I'll be working on and would love your support. And it's definitely another renter relief type bill and alternatives or options to pay your security deposit. We all know that a security deposit is the, you know, money of the renter. And basically, in a nutshell, the security deposit is any money you pay upfront to the landlord other than your first month's rent. And it is your money to get back after you leave minus only reasonable amounts for cleaning, repairs of damage that you caused, or rent. The ordinance basically is requiring the landlord of ten or more units to implement ways to spread out payment as an option. This bill should definitely be encouragement to landlords to take a closer look at their planning and development strategies facing housing instability in our city. I feel that this is an easy start to overcome systematic effects of racism within housing policies and practices. They've already had this, they already have this in place in areas in Virginia, the cities of Atlanta, Cincinnati, and right here in our state in Prince George's, Montgomery County. And we just must be mindful that the place we call home connects to a myriad of other factors determining life outcomes. So again, looking forward to having this hearing and welcome your support. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, are there any additional cosponsors to this bill? I see Councilman Cohen. So please let the record reflect that Councilman Cohen would like to be added on as a cosponsor. As we talk about this bill, this bill will be signed again to Economic and Community Development Committee. These bills are a series of a package that is related to, you know, substantively trying to go and tackle an issue and provide immediate relief to our residents that are struggling. We know that at the end of the day, the stresses of this pandemic reach as far outside of our households and where we lay our head. But at the end of the day, a warm, safe, caring environment is a place that we should be able to at least decompress and lay down at night. The stresses of staying in one's apartment, of staying in one's home, and keeping up on bills is something that we need to provide immediate relief on. So I would like to thank not only you, Madam Vice President, Sharon Green-Milton, but also Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Councilman Robert Stokes. And I know that Councilman Tony Glover is working on another bill part of this package. So again, this is the type of substantive, long-form, important, timely legislation that we're going to continue to try to pump out of this council to ensure that we are getting ahead of our residents' needs. With that, we'll go to resolutions. Resolutions to be introduced. The clerk will read the resolutions.
Resolution 21-0001R, Investigative Hearing Affordable Housing Trust Fund. For the purpose of inviting the acting commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, relevant staff, and the chair and other members of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission to provide an update on the status of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, including but not limited to information regarding revenue raised each year since passage of ordinance eighteen-two-fifteen, projects and initiatives funded so far, projects and initiatives in the pipeline to be funded, the spending plan, and ideas for improving the fund. Sponsors, Councilmember Ramos, Dorsey, Burnett, Middleton, and Bullock. Mr. President.
I would like to recognize the gentlewoman from the fourteenth district, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this resolution asks for a hearing to learn more about the status of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thanks to all of you in 2016, and many advocates from around the city, and of course, the voters voted for establishment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and allowing for the city council to create a funding source and put that into the trust fund. So that in 2018, my colleagues from council, that were in the council at the time, will be on a funding source. And so now, two years later, I think it's timely that we get an update on what's been happening with the trust fund. This is certainly something that residents of the city of Baltimore have wanted, and I think the public hearing is going to be great. I think the commission has done a good job, and the Department of Housing and Community Development. And so this will be the first step in any improvements. Certainly, there needs to be more money in the fund, I believe. And this is the first step in moving forward in making the fund even fairer and better than it has been. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I look forward to the hearing and.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this point, are there any other members that would like to join? I see the hands raised of Councilman Cohen, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Glover. So please let the record reflect that Councilman Stokes, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Glover will be added on as cosponsors to this resolution. This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
Resolution 21-0002R, Investigative Hearing Inland Flood Mitigation. For the purpose of inviting the acting director of the Office of Emergency Management, the acting director of the Department of Public Work, the director of the Department of Planning, the director of the Office of Sustainability, and other representatives of these agencies to provide an update on efforts to mitigate and prevent inland flooding, which is not covered by the recently passed nuisance flood plan. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos, Burnett, and Middleton.
I would like to call on the gentlewoman from District fourteen, Councilwoman Odette Ramos again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is an important issue all over the city that we don't often talk about. Last summer in my district, we saw images on television of a bus being stuck in the middle of massive floodwaters. And so, and this was not a new thing. This is something that has happened for years. The residents on Thirty-Fifth Street, right near Mervaux, have experienced flooding for decades. And so this hearing is really about listening about what else is going on. Councilman Burnett also has flooding in District, on Frederick Avenue. We're working together on this to understand what are the plans to mitigate flooding like this in the future and how it would be helpful. We know that the nuisance flood plan was just passed by the city department as a requirement of the state, which, of the General Assembly, to have a plan about coastal, coastal nuisance flooding. And so it's important that we start the conversation around this inland flooding. And I look forward to the discussion, and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional cosponsors? I see the hand of Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen. Please let the record reflect that we would like to add on as cosponsors, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Stokes. This resolution has been assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee.
Resolution 21-0003R, Informational Hearing Baltimore's COVID-19 Vaccination Plan for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore's healthcare community, and other interested parties before the Baltimore City Council to discuss Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. Sponsors are Councilmember McCray, Ramos, Middleton, and Bullock.
I would like to call on Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues who have cosponsored this important resolution. This resolution calls for our city's health department and members of our healthcare community to provide information regarding our city's vaccination plan, the safety and efficacy of the vaccine, excuse me, of the vaccine, and what we are doing and what we will do to engage and educate our communities and assist Baltimore city residents in making an informed decision regarding the vaccine. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairwoman. I think this is a timely resolution. Again, I see the hands of Councilman Stokes, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Glover, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Conway. All right, so I got to do this by memory. And so I think we're going to add on as cosponsors Glover, Burnett, Porter, Cohen, Stokes, Torrance, and Conway. Did I get it right? All right. That resolution has also been assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. I think we're still having some city hall network issues we're working out. So I'll jump in. Resolution 21-0004R, Recognizing Systemic Racism as a Public Health Crisis. For the purpose of recognizing systemic racism as a public health crisis, sponsors Stokes, Glover, and Middleton. This resolution, I'll call on Stokes. Do you want to talk about this, Chairman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a resolution I introduced, so I'm bringing it back up. But I just kind of want to make some comments about what happened over in DC. So I watch examples of extreme racism at its work, at its worst. During 1968 riots, black people were beaten, dragged, and attacked by dogs. Today, Black Lives Matter protesters meet nearly similar extreme force. A perfect example of how systemic racism comes into play was clearly demonstrated during last week's storming of the Capitol. While anarchists with an agenda to overthrow the government broke windows, destroyed property, and threatened catapults with bodily injuries. And those treasonous actions were not met. Very little response from law enforcement because of the color of their skin of the perpetrators. This horrific event was encouraged by Mr. Trump, and I applaud the House decision to impeach. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. At this time, are there any additional cosponsors? So I have Cohen, Burnett. Any additional cosponsors? So please let the record reflect that Councilman Cohen and Councilman Burnett would like to be added on to 21-004R.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor as well, Councilwoman Porter.
Please add Councilwoman Porter as well. Clerk, you may read Resolution 21-0005R.
Resolution 21-0005R, Department of General Services Update on Sanitizing City-Owned Buildings. For the purpose of requesting that the Department of General Services provide the city council with an update on how employees of DGS have been keeping city-owned buildings clean during the COVID-19 pandemic and post-information about cleaning schedules in these buildings. Sponsors are Councilmember Stokes, Glover, Middleton, and Bullock.
I would like to, at this point, to recognize gentleman from the twelfth district, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was another resolution that I introduced last year. And because of the city buildings that we have not really been going in and out of, and because of the buildings that are seniors, the Rad buildings, we, I wanted to make sure that those buildings were posted when they cleaned and sanitized. Because we all have a lot of senior builders in our district, so a lot of our seniors come down to pick up their mail. So they feel a little uncomfortable in terms of nothing posted that they cleaned the doorknob. So I'm just calling for a hearing for those agencies to come back and report to the city council what have they done since this was introduced? And are they still, are they posting that information? So residents, and especially the city buildings, we go back to city buildings, I need to know that they're cleaning and doing it also. So the idea is to make sure they post it and make sure they're continually cleaning these buildings and senior buildings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. At this point, are there any additional cosponsors to this resolution? Please let the record reflect that Chairwoman McCray would like to be added on as a cosponsor. Please let the record reflect that Chairwoman McCray would like to be added on as a co-sponsor. Any additional co-sponsors? Okay, this resolution will be assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee.
Resolution 21-0006-R, lead by example, calling on city council members and staff to be trained in trauma-informed care. For the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City Council and council staff to be trained in trauma-informed, healing-centered approaches that will enhance realization of the prevalence of trauma in systems, encourage empathetic governance, recognize the presence of signs and symptoms throughout system-wide service and program delivery, and address trauma to avoid the barriers to positive connection and interaction. Sponsors are Councilmember Cohen, Dorsey, Ramos, Burnett, Middleton, and Bullock.
At this time, I would like to recognize the resolution sponsor. That would be the gentleman from the 1st District, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, when we passed the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act, Baltimore became first in the nation to comprehensively legislate trauma-informed care. I'm proud of the collaboration between community and government that produced this law, and now is the time for full implementation and for us, our council, to get trained. As we contend with the devastating loss caused by COVID-19, overdose deaths, and the unrelenting scourge of gun violence, we must embrace a healing-centered, trauma-responsive approach. We've all had the experience of answering the call of a constituent who recently lost someone. Last year, I got a call from a Patterson High School teacher who was grieving the loss of not one, but three of her former students. They'd all been murdered within a month. Three children gunned down in our city. Their names were Ethan, Naieli, and Jordan. They were brilliant, sweet, funny, and kind. Their deaths were devastating to family, friends, and the entire Patterson community. The trauma of this loss was exacerbated because people couldn't grieve together in person because of the pandemic. The teacher said to me, Zeke, right now, it feels like no one in Baltimore can breathe. I remember feeling overwhelmed, anxious, and hopeless as I listened to her. As city council members, second-hand vicarious traumatization is a part of our work, as it is for educators, for firefighters, for librarians, and for all frontline employees. When we come into constant contact with people who are suffering, we ourselves absorb some of their pain. And as President Mosby reminded me the other day, so too do our staff as they pick up these calls. This training will help to unpack the pain we've experienced as a city and provide a path forward. As the late, great Congressman Elijah Cummins, who this legislation was named after, used to say, "We must transform our pain into passion and our passion into purpose." Now is the time. I look forward to joining my colleagues in the training, and I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
The motion is suspended. The rules are suspended. Again, I'll call on the Councilman Cohen from the 1st District.
I move the resolution.
Roll call.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember McCray.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilmember Conway.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleifer.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Councilmember Torrance.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Aye.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Costello. Who is absent. Councilmember Stokes.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ramos.
Yes, may I explain my vote, please? I just want to, so I just want to express my support for this legislation. We've got to walk the walk in addition to talking the talk, and I look forward to the training. Thank you very much.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted.
Resolution 21-0007-R, investigative hearing, water billing system. For the purpose of inviting the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Finance to address the crippling problems with and describe solutions for the water billing system described in the recent report jointly published by the Baltimore City and Baltimore County Inspectors General. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway, Ramos, Burnett, McCray, President Mosby, Councilmember Middleton, and Councilmember Bullock.
At this point, I would like to call on the resolution sponsor, Council Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is in response to the Office of the Inspector General, the report that came out last month about the problems that we've been having with our water billing system. We have over 22,000 non-working water meters. That causes a huge problem for our system. But we all know this in light of having spent over $133 million to update that system and to implement new water meters. We're looking to figure out why these problems persist and to dig a little further, figure out what we need to do to fix these problems. So we're going to call in the Acting Director of Department of Public Works and the Director of Finance in order to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, are there any additional members that would like to be added on as co-sponsors? So far, I see the hand of Councilman Glover, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Cohen. So that's Glover, Torrance, Porter, Stokes, and Cohen. This resolution has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
Resolution 21-0008-R, recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. For the purpose of recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and recognizing the tireless and ongoing effort of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative in educating the citizens of Baltimore to assist in the prevention of human trafficking and supporting victims of human sex and labor trafficking. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, McCray, Middleton, and Bullock.
Thank you. I would like to call the gentleman from the 8th District, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just walking in the footsteps of President Obama, who initiated the first-ever Human Trafficking Awareness Month back in 2001 to 2010, and thankful for the efforts of this body as well as the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which has over 55 partners from a community-based organization, survivor and victim advocates, law enforcement agencies, and most recently, the number of hospitals throughout Baltimore City who are all working together to both pass good policy, to help prevent human trafficking in Baltimore City, which we know is a very challenging problem and has been for a long time, to providing support and wraparound services for survivors who've experienced this very serious crime. Our work isn't done. We know that there are people, everyday children, adults, who are victims of sex trafficking. Labor trafficking is prevalent on construction sites and in jobs, restaurant industry, et cetera, throughout the city of Baltimore and across the country and the world, as well as people living in indigenous servitude. And so this is a way for us to both acknowledge that there, a lot of work has been done, and a lot of work will continue to be done to end this very heinous crime and that impacts people all over the city, all over the country, and it's the most modern form of slavery globally. So I'm thankful for all of your hard work and looking forward to continue to try and end this in Baltimore City. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Thank you. Without objection for the rules to be suspended. There are no objections. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for immediate adoption under the resolution.
Roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
May I explain my vote?
Yes.
For my colleagues, for anyone that doesn't know, this is exceptional work that has gone on with this task force. It hasn't gotten a ton of publicity or credit by design. You know, we're dealing with a really sensitive and heinous crime, but Councilmember Burnett has done sessions in different districts with the task force to be able to identify human trafficking, and it's been really impactful work, and I hope that he'll do that again because it's led to just a lot of people's lives being dramatically improved throughout our city and in my district as well. And I vote yes.
Councilmember McCray.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you. I just want to say that I, too, am very thankful to all the work that Councilmember Burnett has put into this and to bring it around to all the districts in the city, and I know that my constituents really appreciate having had the opportunity to have an unusually intimate and in-depth conversation on this subject to better understand how we can be aware of human trafficking in our communities and in our travels and everywhere we go. So I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
And I'd like to just quickly explain my vote. Yes, you have my vote. I just want to, I concur with my colleagues mentioning the work that Councilman Burnett had previously done in all the districts, and even though we're not going to have a hearing on this, I think it is important if we do try to work again to have the same type of thing in every district, especially since we have some new members of the council to give them a chance to weigh in, because we do have this problem in all of our districts. And just want to reiterate that prostitution is also a form of human trafficking. A number of people do have a problem with making that clear, but it definitely is, and we have that problem even more so during this pandemic. So my vote is also a yes.
Councilmember Torrance.
Yes.
Burnett.
Just a quick second. Yeah, and thank you all for the new members. We were doing, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, prior to the pandemic, was doing community-based training in many districts we could get to, and we did cover a large swath of the city prior to COVID. We will be doing that online, and so of course I'll be reaching out to all of you to help get the word out. The other thing, Mr. President, if I could just get one more second, I forgot to mention in my remarks that I got word, in the last term, we passed a bill that required all of the hotels and restaurants to post the human trafficking hotline in their restrooms, in the back of the doors. And at the time, I wasn't sure how that was going to go, and we had some hiccups along the way in getting that implemented, but I actually got word last week that a survivor saw, in Baltimore, saw that phone number on the back of a hotel room door, called it, and was able to get help through one of our hospital partners that's on the Human Trafficking Collaborative. And so it's one of those things where if we can save, you know, anybody's life and pull them out, it just shows you that the impact that we can have in this body at really saving lives, especially in an issue like human trafficking. And so I will absolutely be doing those trainings again. We're trying to adjust it so we can move online and still reach people where they are. And with that, I vote yes, and thank you all again for the support.
Councilmember Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello. Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
So I, too, share all the same sentiments that was spoken tonight. You know, Councilman Burnett, as I stated last Monday at the council luncheon, has been a steadfast advocate. It's a very, very important topic. When you think about human trafficking, you know, the characteristics of a city like Baltimore literally speaks to that, particularly when we're talking about in the height of COVID, where more and more of our young folks and our residents are put in vulnerable situations. But this is a type of thing that we need to continue to call attention to. And again, Councilman, thank you for all your hard work and constantly grabbing the bull by the horn and educating us and moving us in the right direction in the city. This motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted.
Resolution 21-0009-R, request for state action, elimination of home detention monitoring fees. For the purpose of calling on the General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign legislation eliminating home detention monitoring fees as a matter of fundamental fairness during these economically challenging times, sponsors are President Mosby, Councilmember Middleton, and Bullock.
This is a bill that I wrote in Indianapolis, and been fighting for the past three years. The last year, we were able to get it out of the House. Unfortunately, with the session, the way it ended due to COVID-19, I was not able to be successful in the Senate. But it's an important bill that goes directly to criminalization of poverty, a thing that we've been fighting for, not just in this body of city council, but also statewide and around the country. So I'm excited about that. At this point, I'll call on Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the appropriate rules to immediately adopt.
Without objection, the rule suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for immediate adoption.
Roll call.
President Mosby.
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember McCray.
Yeah.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Burnett. Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Yes.
Costello.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. And now we move on to the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
The motion has been approved, and the motion has been properly second, approved by Vice President Green Middleton, and seconded by Chairman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and this calendar is approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I apologize. Point of order, I was having technical difficulties, and wanted the record to reflect that I was a yes vote on the two previous votes for immediate adoption, 21-0006-R, and I believe 21-008-R, which was the lead-by-trauma immediate adoption resolution and recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, immediate adoption resolution.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. At this point, our chairs, we would hear your committee. Please proceed with your committee announcements. First up, we're going to have Madam Vice President of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am calling a hearing for the Economic and Community Development Committee on January 26, 2021, at 2:00 p.m., and it's a briefing with representatives from the Baltimore City Department of Planning and Law Department will brief the Economic and Community Development Committee on the roles and responsibilities of certain parties, excuse me, during review and authorization of zoning legislation in Baltimore City. And that is also extended to And that is also extended to any other council members that would like to participate. Again, that's Tuesday, January 26, at 2:00 p.m. And it will be a virtual meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next committee is Education, Workforce, and Youth.
No meetings, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Chairman Stokes. Next committee is Health, Environment, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to an out signing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January 27, excuse me, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. on Resolution 21-0003-R: Informational Hearing Baltimore's COVID-19 Vaccination Plan. The hearing will be conducted virtually through WebEx and will also be televised on CHON TV. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The next committee is Public Safety and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am calling a hearing of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee to hear Bill LO21-001 on Wednesday, February 3, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. It's going to be a virtual meeting, and we're going to be discussing the Baltimore Police Department's Consent Decree Implementation Update so that we can get an update on what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer. At this point, there's no, I called on your committee. At this point, there's no meeting scheduled, correct?
Nothing scheduled at this point.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up is Ways and Means. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move on Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Committee, the Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, January 19, at 10:00 a.m. This will be a virtual WebEx hearing for Council Bill 21-0007, COVID-19 Restaurant, Consumer, and Gig Worker Relief Act. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, we're going to move on to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized for any announcements you would like to make. Please hold your hand up. Yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, again, thank you for appointing me to the Legislative Committee of the Maryland Association of Counties. It's an honor to be able to represent the Baltimore City Council on that committee where we'll be looking at legislation that affects all of the counties and jurisdictions in the state and determining, you know, whether to pay or not. If any of my councilmember colleagues see anything that you need me to make sure that we vote in favor, please let me know, and I'll be happy to do that. And so, and also look forward to continuing the dialogue with all of you and all of these builders and landlords. Thank you.
No, thank you. I think we have a tremendous staff of diversity, skill set, and experience on this council. And I know, Councilwoman Ramos, you will do an amazing job in representing Baltimore City with me. At this point, are there any additional announcements? Councilman Costello, Chairman Costello, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would now be an appropriate time to ask for a moment of silence.
Sure, we can, the Madam Vice President will take it down.
Okay. I sent it over to her already. One, I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Lemuel D.D. Thomas, who was longtime manager at the Robert C. Marshall Recreation Center and up and has just had an incredible impact on so many kids in that community. Number two, David Koenig, longstanding member of Locust Point Community. He leaves behind a large family there. Number three, Deanna Alek, longstanding member of the Federal Hill and South Baltimore community, whose life was tragically taken in a freak vehicular accident in Baltimore County, sadly. And finally, Louie Anne David from the Sharp-Lennon Hall community. I spoke at her funeral this morning. She leaves behind three children, eleven grandchildren, eleven great-grandchildren, three great-great-grandchildren. I say, try to say all that quickly, but I think it tells you something that Mrs. David lived a very full and blessed life. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. At this point, are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seen none. The chair recognizes Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, January 25, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for Lemuel D.D. Thomas, David Koenig, Louie Anne David, and Deanna Jean Alkey, and also from the 7th District of Councilman Torrance. He gave me a name, Crystal Harding Flowers, which was very instrumental in the 7th District. And also Katisa Latia Malete. I hope I said that name correct.
Yep.
And also, Mr. President, we also would like to have a moment of silence for the families of the victims of violence. Do you have that number? We'll just make sure we have that.
No, it's not happening.
Okay. Well, we definitely want to have a moment of silence for them and also for the victims that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic and the COVID-19 pandemic and all of the family members that are still struggling in hospitals trying to overcome this pandemic. Thank you.
And Madam Vice President, before we go into the moment of silence, just want to say we're in 2021, not 2020.
Oh, exactly. So the next council meeting is January 25, 2021. That's going to take some getting used to saying.
Definitely, definitely. At this time, we're going to recognize a moment of silence. Thank you. There being no further business on the desk, this concludes the second meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council.